Me?
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's me.
Okay, I call the main to order at this time. We stand for the invocation, pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag. Mr. Campbell.
Father, I bring the needs of our city before you, and I ask that you bless us with your grace. I pray for your protection to cover all of our public service personnel, that they may serve this community with peace. May your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all of those that lead and serve this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. First item is proclamation supporting Denton County Mental Health Month, May 2024 Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, May 9, 2024. Ms. Pickens is going to read the proclamation.
Proclamation for Mental Health Month in the City of Corrent, 2024. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental for the future of the City of Corrent, and whereas the citizens of the City of Corrent value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens, and are proud to support observances such as Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas one in five adults has a diagnosable mental health condition, and whereas only half of Denton County parents are familiar with mental health services in their community. And the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for individuals and families places upon our community's critical responsibility. And whereas there's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. And whereas each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and a responsibility to promote mental wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. And whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, who do their unique partnership in prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of our children, youth, and the families in our community. And whereas it is appropriate that a month shall be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards mental health education.
You talk loud. Go ahead.
For a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards mental health education, the support of treatment and recovery. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. And therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Corrent, along with Bill Hydam and the Mayor of Corrent, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month and May 9, 2024 is Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And we call upon our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every person's mental health needs to unite this month in observance of such exercises as will commit the people of Corrent to increasing awareness and understanding the mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people's mental health conditions. Sign this fourth day of April, 2024.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council, may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Currently have, um, what's it? Mr. Zinnner?
Zinser.
Yes, Zinser. Okay. Please state your name and your address for the records, please. And you have three minutes.
I have a little, uh, show to present you also. My name is Joe Zinser. I live at, uh, 3704 Lynchburg Drive. I don't have to do this.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Miguel.
Miguel, this is my residence. It's where I live. This is the drainage ditch creek or raging river that runs through my property and crosses under Lynchburg Drive. This is how the water runs. I don't know why. This are the three pipes. And you can see the materials that are collecting there. Over the years, these pipes have become blocked and flooded my property as well as my neighbor at 3700. I understand the city, a number of years ago, had a study done, and nothing has ever occurred. Where I used to be able to drive across this drainage ditch to cut both sides of my yard, it is now almost three foot deep and almost three foot across from erosion. I'm bringing this to your attention because I think it presents many hazards. This is what the wall looked like in 2023. I went and bought Red Oak ties and began reinforcing the wall. We had a perfect storm. The city didn't open their 20-inch water line. We had released the water from whatever is upstream from me, and we had one of those torrential rains. The beams that I had put down and I had anchored in place with rods washed away. I brought them back, stacked bricks on top of them, steady opened the water thing again. We had another rain, and the bricks washed away. I've thought this until I missed out of time. The thing that worries me is that it is deep enough and rushes hard enough. It's a hazard. A child gets into that and washes away, hits their head on one of those concrete blocks, it could be a serious injury. So I bring this to your attention because I want to shed that responsibility. I don't know what you do about the city didn't open their water line, but they've done it twice since I moved in November 2020. Now it's April of 2024, and my situation just continues to get worse. This is what it looked like just a couple of days ago. Do you see the debris already building up? I have cleared as much as I could out of the two pipes to the right. It just continues to wash down the stream. Again, I don't know where it comes from, but I'm stuck with it. I can no longer cut that side of my property without going out my driveway, driving up Lynchburg and my neighbor's driveway and cut that side of the property. I don't believe that's what the city intended to do and allow this creek to be re-change, be changed, and be rerouted so they can put one more lot in subdivision. Tristan Cisco came out and sent me an email on the 28th of March. Said Ian Gladder reached out to Texas A&amp;M University. I've not had any word since. I don't think reaching out to Texas A&amp;M is going to solve anything. Secondly, Gladder Tristan met with my neighbors. I was not advised, so I missed it. But I was told that they told that neighbor there was no money, that the grant that was given was for taking care of the problem down towards Red Oak. This creek or stream, whatever it is, passes right through my property. So I'm asking for four things. First of all, I'd like there to be a public update on what action the city is taking at the May meeting. That's a month. Should give time to somebody to react. I'd like to ask the city attorney to publicly provide potential liability the city has for not taking action on this. I'd like this statement and all pictures in the public record. This is to limit my liability in case there's an accident, death, or injury. And last of all, I'd like the city to stay in contact with me and tell me what's going to be done to restore my property. I thank you for your attention and wish you well.
Thank you.
Just pull it out.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
May I make a motion to approve?
Is that microphone there?
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Um, I didn't hear it.
It's unanimous. Item number seven. Conduct the public hearing to consider testimony and act under amendment to section one provisions and procedures and section three subdivision regulations of the City of City's unified development code to allow for the administrative approval of certain plat application by the Director of Planning and Development. Allow for applicants to request public multiple 30-day extensions of time for plat approval and remove requirements for a new application and new application P, should a plat application be disapproved. Case number ETA 24-002 UDC Plating Amendments. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we indicated in your staff report, our recommendation tonight on this item is to open the public hearing and after receiving the comment, close it. And we would ask that you table this item and definitely give us a little bit more time to study this recommendation. I think I indicated it a few weeks ago. Probably got this on the agenda a little too quick. We've got some, a little more research we need to do. This is in relation to potential estate law allows us to handle plats administratively, but we want to study that a little bit more. As you know, right now, they go P and Z. We'll, um, we'd like to come back to you with some thoughts on that down the road.
Okay. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. And do we need a motion to extend it?
I think just a motion to, after you close the public hearing, I think the motion to table the action item definitely. Move it appropriately.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and table the action on the request to an undetermined future City Council meeting.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number eight. Conduct the public hearing to consider an act and an ordinance of the city initiated text amendments to section 2.06.02 MXC, mixed-use commercial of the zoning ordinance, a part of the City of Corrent's unified development code. Case number CTA 24-003-MXC zoning amendments. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that was discussed a few times now. And tonight, Melissa Day, the planning and zoning director, will cover this item again, maybe give you the cliff notes where we talked about previously and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. And I just will go over kind of the highlights of the proposed text amendments for the MXC. This is a map of our conference of plan, land use plan, showing the transitory and development. And this would be really intended primarily for this area and could be potentially applicable to other areas, but that would be the primary focus for this. And this is really just a map showing our zone, existing zoning, and it shows you the areas that are currently zoned in MXC. Much of this is undeveloped or underdeveloped and could apply to those areas. And so I'll try to quickly go through the requirements. One key element is requiring a mix of uses, of course, for the mixed-use districts. We have one exception for North Corrent Street and Trent Parkway and the mixed-use requirements where we're proposing requiring a minimum of 60% linear feet commercial use at the ground level. And that's because those streets are important for downtown development in terms of the retail development specifically. And then there's a project test for projects that are under three acres and over three acres. Under three acres requiring a minimum of 10% commercial use as part of the development. That has to be at the ground level. And then if it doesn't meet the project test, then it goes to vicinity test. This is an example of the vicinity test wherein requirement would be made, the two-thirds of the total land area within the development be no more than one land use in these broad categories, residential, commercial, mixed-use building, institutional, public works. And that's to ensure that you do have a mix of uses. So you could have a development that comes in that may be all one use, but you're looking at the area as a whole to make sure that there is a mix of uses in the immediate area being 1,000 square feet. So our current code is intended for standalone, non-residential uses. Doesn't allow for residential and non-residential in the same building. It actually doesn't really allow for residential uses without a special use permit, and then it can only be 10%. So that's one of the, I think, challenges in creating a true mixed-use development. Streets and public spaces are covered in the text. That's a really important component for mixed-use district in terms of the public realm. So designing streets and sidewalks for pedestrian activity is important. Using complete streets, and we talked about that at the last meeting, what that entails, and it's not just a one-size-fits-all type of design, but it's a street design that, um, that provides for comfortable access for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicular traffic. And then providing on-street parking is an important component. These are cross-sections that are in the, um, in the street sections that are in the proposed code for North Corrent Street and Corrent Parkway, where we've come up with a complete street design for those streets. Building location setback is a really important component. So what you're striving for here is to have a minimal building setback, buildings at the street edge. Drive-through facilities is something that we're adding back into the MXC. You're proposing adding back in to actually allow that it would have specific requirements that you don't have the drive-through facility in the front and that you have screening elements for the drive-through facility, drive-through elements that are in the rear. Building heights, we would propose to allow a maximum of five stories, but that there be a transition that would be required. And you can see how that's calculated here. That within 20 feet, you could only, of a residential development, you could only have up to two stories. And then you have a 45-degree plane to require that transition near a single family. Parking is a really important component. We all have cars, Texas. So how do we deal with parking in a mixed-use type of environment? And so parking garages are something we would certainly encourage and sharing of those garages so you have a higher utilization. Trying to, trying to have parking lots that are in the rear or off to the side. Parking requirements, we wouldn't have any, actually, except for properties located close to a single-family district. And that's to make sure you don't have people parking in the residential areas for commercial uses. And then residential would require parking, of course, for specifically for the residents. And then for those, the UDC parking requirements would be reduced by 25%. And then surface parking lots would hope that they would be located behind or to the side of the building, but when they are on the main street, that they be screened, as you see here. And parking garages would be required to be wrapped with commercial if it's along the street front. And this is an example of, this is actually a parking garage that has a retail wrap on it. Architectural standards, requiring a flat roof, variation in articulation in facade design, incorporation of structural elements. And there's specificity in terms of the articulation to be at least every 30 feet, to have a variety of materials, material patterns, and so on. Finestration, which are openings, doors, and windows. Openings of not less than 60% of the horizontal length of the structure between three and eight feet above the sidewalk. So that's to ensure you have something that is like this, that we're used to seeing the retail at the ground level. And then a clear delineation between the first and the second level. For example, you see that here in these elements. We propose that a variety of building materials be allowed, and these are outlined in the, in the text. And the reason for that is to allow an organic sort of development that doesn't look all exactly the same. Tree preservation. We had a lot of discussion internally about how to handle this in a way that makes sense for a higher density type development, where of course you're, it's a little bit harder to preserve existing trees. So we're recommending protected trees be defined as 20 caliber inches or more instead of six. In an urban environment like this, though, you're going to have plantings of street trees that are going to be about 25 foot on center. So quite a few additional shade trees that are going to be planted in that type of environment. We've discussed the uses to add to the chart, and that's in your packet. And then we have just a general, um, there's been a lot of specificity, I should say, on the signage, but I just have a slide that kind of indicates the types of signage that are recommended to be allowed. And this is much more, this is, there are a lot more signs that are allowed, types of signs that are allowed in the MXC than are actually allowed in our, um, in our signage code. And that's to encourage the creative type of signage in a, in a more sort of downtown-like environment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and we do have, we did have just the same one letter of opposition that we received, and staff does recommend approval.
Are there any questions from council?
I have one. We, in one of them, it says that the LEED building, LEED, what is that? What's the acronym? I missed that when we talked about it before.
It's an environmentally sensitive building. I don't remember the acronym. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the acronym. But it's basically an environmentally sensitive, uh, building that.
Like, like.
They just have an energy and environmental.
What would be an example of that?
Example of the types of things that they, they consider materials that are more sustainable. I'm sure I can't list all of them, but LEED is a very strict.
Oh, I see. That falls under that, a building that falls under that sort of, that they were granted that certification.
It's a certification that has a lot of strict requirements, and everything is considered that is environmentally sustainable in the building of the development.
So it would actually be probably a higher standard than what we have. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Good question. You know, I didn't remember.
Any other questions from council? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? Not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve case number ETA 24-0. I think I'm on the wrong motion.
No, you're right.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, I just read the numbers wrong. As presented in, and to approve an ordinance amending section. See how?
Yeah.
I've got myself a little bit confused here. Hold on one second.
003.
I think the motion is wrong. Staff, put it in.
You just, you don't need to say just any.
I move to approve this as presented.
I'll second.
My notes are confusing.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
Cast your vote.
So is it three or one, or does it matter?
I'm sorry, we were discussing how he messed up.
You do that publicly, don't you?
Actually, I think he didn't mess up. The numbers were different in the motion and the, and the proposed, in the action item and the proposed motion.
It's unanimous. Okay, item number nine is going to be tabled to the, um, April 18th meeting. Item number 10, consider an act under an ordinance to adopt.
I think we do need a motion on that. This is the one we talked about in the workshop due between there and the developers.
Okay, I entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to table item number nine to the April 18th meeting. So the developer will have an opportunity to correct their calculations and determine whether or not they need an alternative compliance plan.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, item number 10. Consider an act under an ordinance to adopt an updated water conservation plan and drought contingency plan providing penalties for violations for compliance with the Upper Trinity Regional Water District and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is some information we've talked about a couple of times now in workshops and then most recently in the public hearing. And tonight, our project manager will discuss these disordinants and answer the questions that you have.
This ordinance will be amending our previous ordinance I was adopted in 2019. This ordinance will satisfy requirements of TCU and our water provider, Upper Trinity Regional Water District. As Scott mentioned, we did have our workshop held on January 18th this year, and we held a public hearing on March 21st. The one update that we did, um, as a result of Ms. Tina's comments and other residents who were here for the public hearing, we did update via a variance allowance in the water conservation plan to include a statement that reads, "If additional time is necessary, that request may be submitted for review." So if they need additional time past that 30-day variance, we can review those and proceed from there. Our motion would be to adopt this ordinance. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
I would just appreciate a little more explanation for the public about what it means for the TCU and the Upper Trinity Water District to require us to amend our ordinance to meet their requirements. Like, why are, why are we required to do that? And what happens if we don't?
We are required to update our ordinance every five years. At that time, it's really the plans that are required to be updated, and then we are required to adopt an ordinance for those plans. The most recent update was in regards to the Upper Trinity, the biggest changes that we are now required to hold our residents to twice-weekly watering, which before was not the case. The drought contingency plan that we are also adopting with this ordinance is fairly the same. There were a couple of updates that we presented on the past couple of times that we went through, but more so, um, the plans were made the same.
But when you say watering, that does not include hand watering? That's just your sprinkler systems, correct?
Right, with irrigation or hose-ended sprinkler systems, twice-weekly watering.
So, oh, sorry, Tina.
So, piggybacking on Sam, so a lot of these requirements, it's not like we just said, oh, we want to change things. It's like they're, the Upper Trinity is making us do this, and that's why we have to correct an ordinance, I mean, read your ordinance.
That is true. Requirements do come from Upper Trinity, but we're still required every five years that they are requiring twice-weekly watering mandatory now.
So to be clear, the entity that we buy our water from is requiring us to oppose these restrictions on our citizens.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yep, it's mine.
Okay, I entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance adopting the updated water conservation and drought contingency plans and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item, thank you. Item number 11. Consider an act on a change order with Byron Construction Services for the purchase of artificial turf for the Igora Great Lawn, not to exceed 141,000 authorized city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And speaking of water and grass, this item is to consider a change order for our park project across the street.
a change order for our park project across the street to move forward with artificial turf in the lawn versus sod, as discussed in workshop earlier this evening. And Glenn and myself are here to answer any other questions you may have stemming from that discussion.
This says not to exceed one hundred and forty-one. And you added the fifty thousand, and I know we have to do that in fifteen years. And maybe I didn't make myself my question clear in there. So if we're not going over one hundred and forty-one, then we don't have to pay the fifty thousand until fifteen more years. Okay, because that slide said one ninety-one, but we're not paying that right now.
One ninety-one would have been at end of fifteen years, after this initial cost, the one forty-one plus the fifty in year fifteen.
Can I ask a question?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, is there any other questions from council? Okay, we have a couple in the audience that want to speak to this.
I just have one question. In the, in the, the numbers are different. We have not to exceed one forty-one, and then, then I have another figure here of one forty-one, two ninety, is, which is right. Sorry. Glenn, do you see?
Your proposed motion is for two hundred and ninety more dollars than...
Well, I don't know if that matters. Does it matter?
No, I don't.
Like here, in here? Which is the right number?
One forty-one, because it's one forty, it's one forty and some change. So one forty-one is the correct number. I don't know what the, why the motion says that.
I think we're comfortable with one forty-one.
Okay. Great.
Well, we do have a couple of people in the audience that would like to speak to this. Is it Susan Griffin? Yeah. Please state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Susan Griffith, thirty-one oh eight Alcoa Wing. Real quick, thank you for opening the meeting with prayer and the pledge. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. My concern with the AstroTurf, first of all, we all think it looks great. Who doesn't like the look of AstroTurf until it starts to fail on us, and then we have to do the expensive maintenance. Grass fields, however, rarely exceed a hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Turf has tested and reached temps as high as two hundred degrees Fahrenheit. That's really, really hot. Turf maintenance, I think was mildly understated in the workshop about how much work actually goes into taking care of turf, because it's still going to need to be washed, cleaned, or whatever, and you're going to have all that excess water runoff, and whatever chemicals you take to wash it, and all that's going to be in the runoff. Are we going to have a policy about pets on the lawn, and whether or not they are going to urinate or, you know, do their business on the lawn, and what do we do about that? While grass requires maintenance sprays and such, they usually evaporate with the heat and the sun. The AstroTurf and the base layer of the AstroTurf are full of carcinogens, and that is highly toxic to most people, whether you're on it in your bare feet or breathing it in. It's highly carcinogenic, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. The overall cost is also concerning to me. It's nearly double the cost of grass. I think the grass would be a more specifically responsible option, and maybe we could revisit the AstroTurf layer down the line. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, is it Co- Co-?
Cochrane.
Cochrane, okay. Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Nick Cochrane, thirty-one oh four Blue Jay. There are two negatives that I have with turf, one being the heat. I don't know this product, but a lot of the more modern stuff has helped a lot of that, to have some cooling effects built into it. And then the animal waste is a concern. You know, I mentioned to Glenn this more earlier, you know, running those sprinklers every night can help dilute the urine. That helps, creates a stench that you do see sometimes with turf. However, I think the benefits far outweigh the negatives when it comes to turf. I think the city is wholly underestimating the cost of maintaining that grass for Agora. It's going to require overseeding and just more maintenance to keep it presentable. And when we get through these rains, you know, it would be unfortunate to have to cancel events, you know, especially springtime events when the weather's nice, when it's raining out frequently. I just don't want to get, to have a reputation for canceling some all the time and letting people and kids down. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion undecided.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the change order with Bryn Construction Services for the purchase and installation of fourteen thousand two hundred spur feet of artificial turf for Agora, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, at this time, we're going to entertain a motion out of our executive session on the real decapable treaty agreement.
Mayor, I would move to direct the city manager to proceed as discussed in closed session, and authorize the city manager to execute necessary documents for council approval. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Sorry, we don't have a...
Hold on a minute, say hi.
Hi.
Hold on a second. It's unanimous. Okay. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public, and our staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section thirty point oh eight five of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Byrne.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Yeah, I'd like to request a workshop update on the information that Mr. Zenser provided us, including his four items. And I'm going to read them in. Of course, a public update, what liability does the city have? Have we proposed to stay in contact until we do something with that? And then, of course, who wants the pictures entered into public record?
Mrs. Henderson.
Yes, sir. I'd like to provide every word, tell everyone that Representative Richard Hayes will be speaking on Wednesday at our chamber luncheon, and I give it an update. I think that might be beneficial for anyone that wants to come hear that. If you need more information, you can, you know, the Chamber website or just see me. And then Congressman Burgess is having an emergency preparedness seminar on April thirteenth at Thousand Hills Church. And both of those are, you know, great things for us to stay up to date.
Thank you. Just a moment.
I do. I have, I'd like to ask our city manager and maybe our staff to start pursuing grants a little bit more vigorously. I sit on the North Texas COGS Criminal Justice Policy Committee, and this is the season for scoring grants, and I'm in the middle of scoring grants right now. And a lot of the law enforcement agencies from around, COGS sixteen counties, they pursue grants for drones, training equipment, actor shooter equipment. I'm just right, I wrote down a few of the ones that I'm scoring for nap license readers, ballistic vests, use of force simulators, which gives great training with no risk to the, to our officers. So while we as a council, you know, definitely like to make sure that our police department is well-equipped and, but these are some, maybe some extra things that they would like to have, that maybe won't fit into the budget. But COG has multimillion-dollar grants available for a lot of things, and I'd like to, at least in the Criminal Justice Policy Committee that I, that I sit on, we do nonprofit in law enforcement. There is a lot of opportunities to maybe get some equipment that we maybe wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. So I'd like to add that. That's it.
Mr. Campbell.
There are just two quick things. I think Chief Garner has something there. Do you want to make your announcement on something coming forward, because I can't remember what it's called.
Certainly, Mr. Campbell. This is something that's done every year over at the Lake Dallas High School campus. It's called Shattered Dreams. Some of you are very familiar with it. It's an anti-drunk-driving, anti-underage drinking program that stages a messy accident. And you have fire trucks, and ambulances, and a helicopter, and all this promotion going on. And although we've been putting this out on the social media, and school systems have looked at it on the social media, it's inevitable that somebody calls their city councilman and says, oh my gosh, this was a school shooting, et cetera, et cetera. So why aren't you sure the council was aware this is a planned program, and there's not a disaster happening?
That's tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And I would just add, too, we've been, our public safety staff has been sitting in on meetings really the last week and a half, relative to, you may have heard, there's an event on the eight with solar eclipse. If you haven't heard of that, you don't have to worry about it. And Lance has been going to those meetings, our marshal Chad, our fire chief has been going. And one of the things we just keep hearing is about the potential for some severe traffic on thirty-five. So this is just kind of a warning. One of the comments we've heard several times is when, when it's over, when everybody who's come into town for this, and who knows, ultimately, the weather may be such that we don't get an influx. But when everybody tries to leave at the same time, so just kind of throw that out there to, to watch that. And I know public safety is paying close attention to it. I was going to mention it.
I just have one, one item, and that is on April the seventeenth, it's mayor's breakfast, and we held at the Alana. It's, I know this is early in the morning, I think it starts at six-thirty. And what, we would like to know the head count, or who's going to be attending from the city, so that we, we have a table, and we just want to make sure it's full. And if it's not, there's other people that might be interested. So if they want that in by tomorrow, they can get that to Mr. Goodman. Was that...
Goodwin, whoever that is.